Good evening. We're calling the Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Agenda, April 15, 2024, to order. We have all present except for Counselor McBride and Counselor Merritt. And we have our new business, which is 2024-247-1-FYE, 2025 Proposed Budget. We are on to the Town Clerk, Function 1005, which begins on page 59. And Counselor Parker, would you like to begin putting a number on the floor?
I make a motion for 1,005 and the amount of $392,910. So moved.
Second, Bordelone.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordelone. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a synopsis on your budget?
Do you hear me?
No.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Now? Okay. Marissa Melendez, Town Clerk. And thank you for the invite. And I wrote these numbers down because there's a lot of numbers. As you know, there was a typo in the budget book. One of the salaries was shown $2,079 higher than actual. So the bottom line should be $390,831, which represents an increase of 10.8%.
Can you repeat the full number of your budget again one more time?
Yep. $390,831.
Thank you.
Okay. So 8.8%, 8.8% of that increase comes from personal services, and it is due to the new supervisor and Town Clerk salary, which recently was passed by the council. The other 2.2% is an increase from operating expenses, which is largely due to the costs associated with the Town Clerk doing e-recordings now this year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Pacino?
Do we need to move the correct number?
When somebody wants to put that on the floor, if you have any other questions regarding the budget first?
Not yet.
You can if you'd like.
Go right ahead.
I make a motion to move $390,831.
Second, Rusk.
All right. amended motion of $390,831, moved by Parker, seconded by Rusk. Okay, do we have any questions? Counselor Rusk?
Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. Just one quick question. On line number 5290, you went from $9,630 last year to $16,550 for this year.
What page is that on?
It is on page 61 for us. I'm sorry, line 5290.
Professional/technical?
I believe, because these numbers were the ones that my predecessor had put in, I believe that is because of the e-recordings.
The e-recordings. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Town Clerk. Because we have early elections and a presidential election this year, do you anticipate any changes in what you have in here already for election?
We allotted for that. We have the overtime that we have put in there also because for the presidential election, we are expecting to have overtime.
Okay. So you've already built?
So we've already put it in there. We've adjusted for that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any more hands, we'll take a vote. On account 1005 and the amount of $390,831. Counselor Bordelone?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski?
Aye.
And Counselor Parker?
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously, 7 to 0 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Human Services Account 1051 on page 133.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Based on my job in which I work with Human Services, I will be recusing myself for Accounts Number 1051 and 73660.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Account Number 1051, Counselor Gajewski, would you like to move that number?
Yes, I move the number of $558,852 for Area of Service, Human Service Object Code 105.
Second, Parker. All right. Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Parker. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a synopsis, please?
Good evening. My name is Marge Fundulas, and I'm Director of Human Services. And I have submitted, I had submitted to John initially, the Town Manager, a level service budget with a change in staffing that didn't up the number of staff that we have, but had changed from having a youth counselor onboard to having another social worker onboard because our referrals to Youth and Family Services have been decreasing over the years, in sync with the development of the school-based health centers. They are now providing the counseling that we would be doing at our department. And thus, the referrals have pretty much stopped. Well, not pretty much, they have stopped. So with that in mind, I said to the Town Manager that I felt it was more important for us to focus on the social services end of our services, and had put in a position of a social worker, too, which would be a fourth social worker in the department. Having said that, I was alerted to the fact that this is not a good budget year overall for the town. So with that in mind, I am certainly willing to pull that social worker position from the budget, and hopefully next year will be a better year for that. But that would mean a decrease in the budget of $69,388 from what has been submitted, excuse me, initially. So I'll stop there if there are any questions, but that is, that's what I'm now proposing. Excuse me.
Counselor Parker?
Yes. Thank you. The question would be, does this include the FICA?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's my question. That was it?
Point of information?
Yes.
What was that whole number again?
$69,388.
Eighty-eight. Thank you very much.
I believe if I'm correct, if somebody is double-checking my numbers over there, it brings that if we did deduct that, it would be 482723?
I think it's 489464.
464.
All right.
389.
It's 552.
558.
Oh. I'm using the wrong number. That's why.
49.
Okay. Can you repeat the number one more time? I'm so sorry.
489.
489.
464.
Okay. Do you have anybody that would?
Make a motion?
Like to have questions or comments? Counselor Jones?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for the new number on the floor, which would be 489,464. So moved.
Second, Parker. All right. That is moved by Jones and seconded by Parker.
And just to note that we decreased in, from the current budget of 10.5 to negative
I'm sorry. Counselor Bordelone?
Thank you. I'm just not a person who likes to cut anything in this department. It's something I'm very passionate about. I constantly get phone calls, folks struggling to pay for camp, and many other things that don't fall within the realm. But I understand under this particular section, it doesn't really, this particular section of the budget doesn't affect the direct needs of our citizens. Let me restate that. The staff address the needs, but the funding in this doesn't go into the needs base directly. Is that correct? In this section. It's more personnel and postage and?
We are, yes. This particular part of the budget is largely personnel and a small percentage is operations. But as far as actual operational costs of running the department, postage and printing and what have you.
But as far as direct needs, meaning if someone needed funding, this money couldn't move in this object code into anything that would directly influence anybody getting access to care.
Correct.
And then you stated, and I appreciate your need and outreach and sense of, you know, looking towards, you know, finding ways to reallocate the staff you have when the need decreases. So based on that, would you still, under this object code, be implementing the same changes with your other social workers, more on the social services side versus the counseling side with the remaining staff that you do have?
The social workers are not doing counseling anyway. They're case managers primarily.
And under this section, the staff that were doing the counseling, are they being reflected in here or are they in another section?
The one counselor that we had that was doing youth counseling retired in January. So that's the position that I'm not filling, or that I had initially proposed to switch to a social worker position. But that's the fourth social worker that I mentioned.
And could you just explain, like, what that person would be doing, what type their day-to-day would look like as far as helping implement and care in our town, that social worker position if paid, and what, if we don't fund it, how are you going to implement what they would be doing? How would you have to pick up that slack to do that?
The fourth social worker that I had proposed would be doing the same work as her or his counterparts in social services work in the department, and that's eligibility determinations, determining rent allocations, food, utilities, et cetera. With the elimination of this fourth position that I proposed, it will not reflect on clients not receiving services. That's a double negative. But it won't, it won't impact the services that clients receive. What it will impact is that the three existing social workers will have more on their plate as far as the demands made on them in the department. And there are only six of us in the department as it stands. So it's, there are days when there are only maybe two of us in the office, and it may be one social worker and myself perhaps. So it's a bit of a juggling act, but it works. We make it work. I'm fortunate to have very experienced, dedicated staff. So the three social workers we have can make it work. And as I say, it will not reflect on anyone not getting services. It will just reflect on more work for the existing staff.
Has there been any forward thinking of looking at, like, bringing on an intern from college that's about to graduate, looking for employment as a social worker for the summer, maybe part-time, who needs the internship hours or any of that stuff? I think it's a great entry-level way to kind of get their feet wet. So I'm just curious, because we might be, you know, instead of the $69,000, you might be able to fund it at a lower rate.
Sometimes for nothing.
Yeah, right.
But the problem is, I'm the only supervisory staff in the department. And to have an intern would take time from my routine. And that might defeat the purpose of having someone there. Plus, the nature of the work we do is such that it is, it is pretty sensitive as far as the client's circumstances and needs. And so we probably would need at least a master's, not at least, we'd need a master's level intern. And you need to be able to devote a lot of supervisory time to that type of intern. So that has not been something that I actively looked for, just because I knew it would be, it would take time that I didn't necessarily have.
And is there any thought about a part-time position? Because sometimes, you know, maybe we can't get the full time. But I mean, I have looked at other towns where they have a half position, which that person or he or she is designated to maybe just a section of intake only, or the food pantry, you know. Would a part-time position be something else to consider?
I've thought about that. And in the past, we had some part-time positions, not in the social services end, but in the Youth and Family Services end. And quite frankly, it became difficult to manage the hours as far as having one part-time person and everybody else is full-time and trying to juggle responsibilities, et cetera. It sounds fairly cut and dried to say, okay, this person would handle just such and such. But if that person, if the hours are such that that person is not available when a need, when someone comes through and needs food, let's say, then it all shifts back to everybody else anyway. So it didn't really serve our purposes to have a part-time person. And I really need, I mean, as I say, there are only six of us now, and I really need everybody pulling at the same rate because we're doing things as well as taking in food deliveries and giving out food. And sometimes it feels sort of like you're working in a warehouse because there's so much coming in and you're trying to sort through things. And I need people there for five days a week, seven hours a day.
I thank you for all that you do. And I know we're a smaller department compared to maybe some other municipalities, but you guys put a ton of work into helping people. But one of the things I've heard is sometimes some folks feel like the process of the intake and the paperwork and the financial part can be a little delayed to get access. And I was concerned with, like, not having this position. I know last year I spoke to the Town Manager and folks that, you know, identify, I call right now, and I say, I don't have any money for the next two days. You define that I'm food insecure. You can give an emergency bag right away before the application is even complete. Is that happening still today? That's awesome. So.
That's really always happened.
Yeah.
I, there may have been an exception at some point, but I would like to think that we're doing that consistently.
Perfect. Well, again, thank you for all your hard work and dedication. And, you know, this is, you know, definitely one of my most passionate line items. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions or comments? All right. I think we will take a vote. Counselor Bordelone?
Which number are we doing? I'm of no vote because I just don't believe in cutting. I think it's needed. So I'm a no to that number.
Counselor Pacino? Counselor Rusk has recused herself. Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gajewski?
No.
Counselor Parker? That passes four to one to one.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor?
Who was abstaining?
Counselor Rusk recused herself?
It doesn't, it doesn't count. It's only four to two to zero.
I have four to one to one. Counselor Bordelone had abstained.
I said no.
She said no.
Oh, you said no. I apologize. I thought that was it.
Because I don't want to cut opposition.
I understand. So it's four to two to two. Thank you for pointing that out. I thought that was an abstention. I apologize. All right. Up next is Human Services Assistance Are you recusing from this?
No, this one doesn't really affect my job.
Okay, then. 7320, Counselor Rusk, do you want to move the number?
Absolutely. For Account 7320, I move the number $10,500.
Second, Bordelone?
Okay. Moved by Rusk, seconded by Bordelone. Would you like to give us an update?
This is the remaining monies in this bequest to the department. As it explains on page 138, the original bequest was $144,000. And over the years, we have utilized this in accordance with what the person, Mrs. Perkins, had requested. And we are now at the end of the fund, very similar to what happened with the Spicer Fund a few years, a few years ago. It's been a wonderful resource, but we're at the end of the line with it. And have stretched it about as far as we can. So this is the end of this particular fund, or we anticipate it will be, if we do spend the full $10,500, which is all that's left in the account right now.
Okay. Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Burt, is this something we could pad with the $61,000 savings from the last?
Excuse me, I missed. What was that?
Is this something we can pad with the six, with some of the $61,000 we just got from the last line item?
Well, first of all, it's a different budget. But this one, the numbers are tracked separately because of the endowment. If you were going to do something, the next one would be the more appropriate one if you wanted to increase.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bordelone?
I think it's been great that someone, you know, set this up. And I have seen and worked in nonprofit stuff in the past where, when one ends, sometimes a town or an agency, may continue the tradition of the person who donated the endowment and call it that name if they chose. And there are ways, and again, I don't know with the limitations of the town, so I'm just speaking openly, that they would say, hey, you know, we have this, this, I don't want to call it a scholarship, but an endowment name, and that it was, folks could donate it to it. So you just change the name and reallocate the taxes or however, you know, you register it. But you could continue on with the name and post it on your website and such. When I was in college in Massachusetts, there was one that when I was volunteering and was ending, and the town in Worcester, Mass. decided to keep it on, had to change the coding, the endowment and all that, but kept it the name, and used that as their driver in, like, memory of or this action. And folks would donate right into that for that purpose. So I'm just asking. I'm not sure if there's ever been a push to do something like that as a way of kind of keeping the name on, and there's a way you can publicize it, and someone might say, you know what, I have an endowment of, you know, this amount of money, and I want to donate $10,000 into it. Just a thought.
We haven't had such an individual step up. We have certainly made it known that we would take donations into the account to keep it, to keep it going. But that has not happened, and there hasn't been another benefactor that stepped up.
Well, I mean, I thank this family for their kindness and generosity to the community. And I think it definitely served many well and for some time that for the intended purpose. And, you know, maybe in the future, there will be another way that we can do stuff like this. But obviously, this is a no-brainer. You support it. So thank you.
All right. Not seeing any more hands. We're going to vote on Account Number 7320 for the amount of $10,500. Counselor Bordelone?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski?
Aye.
Counselor Parker? That passes seven to zero to zero. All right. Up to the next account, which is 7360. Counselor Jones, would you like to pass that one? Move that one?
Human Services Assistant Fund, 7360, in the amount of $32,000. So moved.
Second, Bordelone?
Is it 30 to 30,000? Thirty thousand.
The financing plan.
It's the appropriation at the top.
So thirty thousand, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second, Bordelain.
All right, moved by Jones, seconded by Bordelain. Councilor Bordelain.
I'd like to make a motion to allocate more funds in this count. My motion would be to move this number from thirty-two thousand and take the six, take sixty thousand of the previous line and make this ninety-two thousand dollars. That's my thought.
Second, Gieske.
Point of information, are we allowed to use salary into this account, which would have been salary?
I'm not really using it. I'm just.
But the appropriations, like thirty thousand, the financing source was thirty-two thousand.
Right, so what I'm asking is to increase this line from thirty, oh, sorry. So make it thirty, make it ninety thousand, sorry. Uh, Gieske, ninety thousand.
Would that be going into the general assistance portion?
Correct.
Second, Gieske.
And then my reason is, we spoke about ARPA funds before and I was a firm believer. I looked at the numbers. We had over eight point four million dollars come into this town and only three hundred and fifty thousand has been allocated to human services. And in my opinion, that ratio is off. When I looked at other towns, it's great to grow, you know, our infrastructure, which I was in full support of, but I'd like to see that number a little bit higher. Since then, we haven't been able to. So this is a chance now. I thank the town manager for setting this up with the Perkins Fund ending. We have an obligation as our town to help our most vulnerable in our, you know, on every level in our town, from paving our streets in the most desirable neighborhoods to, you know, making sure things, you know, everyone can fall in hard times. It could be as simple as a medical diagnosis with a high medical bill that can throw someone back, followed by a divorce or anything else going on. And so I am a firm believer that this town runs on the backs of everybody. And a good town running is funding and helping all of our folks at every level. So my hope is that this funding would open up opportunities where Perkins is about to close, but we can continue the movement and the momentum forward. So that is my reason for that. And I'm hoping to have the support of my fellow councilors. And I thank the town manager for his forward thinking and seeing the Perkins Fund ending and trying to find a way to bridge that. So that is my hope, that we can bring that number up. I have to say, I do get a lot of phone calls from residents asking for help with camp, helping with this, helping with that, text messages, emails, Facebook messages. People are in need. And this is our time to do such. Thank you.
I have a very quick question. How is this in relation to the account we passed where it was contributions to other funds with the thirty thousand there as well? Is that just a pass-through to go to this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, if this was altered, then you'll need to alter the ten-seven-three.
Councilor Gieske.
Manager Burt, can you say that again? Can you answer Councilor Parker's question again?
If you recall, Thursday night, we had passed the ten-seven-three budget where, if you recall, that was that transfer fund. That was the confusion on how basically funding out of the property taxes to these special funds, that first line item in ten-seven-three was thirty thousand to match this. So if this number changes, you'll need to reconsider the ten-seven-three budget.
Okay, so would it make more sense than to divide the additional sixty thousand and a half to make it sixty thousand and then thirty thousand in the, to reconsider the thirty thousand in the other fund?
That's, that's just a pass-through. Whatever number you put in this will be mirrored in that. So if you put, it doesn't increase the amount of money. It's just a place of marking it coming out of the general fund into these special funds. So it's just a pass-through. It's not really doing any, it's not spending anything else.
Okay, so it would just, it would just add sixty thousand dollars. Do you know what to do?
Right. Whatever you do here, you'll just mirror it in the ten-seven-three.
But it will increase the budget.
Yeah, this would, yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I am in favor of the amended motion on the floor. I think, I just feel like you have a responsibility to help our most notable citizens when we can. And with the decrease in the human services budget overall, I tend to be, I just, I don't really feel comfortable taking money away, not bringing it to good use. So that is why I'm in favor of the amended motion on the floor. Thank you.
So I have some questions. So as I can see, from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four on this paperwork, it says there were zero. So this thirty thousand that we're starting off with, it was a brand-new account that we had set up as a town, right?
Correct.
So you didn't have this prior. So this is all, the thirty thousand is brand-new money.
What we have used prior to this and will continue to use is our donation trust fund, which in the past has been, aside from the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we received, the donation trust fund has been really our, our primary source of financial assistance to people. We have other funds such as Groton Utilities Energy Assistance Fund and a special energy assistance fund that usually has about five or six thousand in it that helps with seniors in particular who need fuel assistance. And Club Fifty-Five is one of the big donors to that. So we have certain other accounts, but, that don't show up in the budget as such, that we have been using to assist clients. So the managers, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the attempt here was to have some town funds available as well. Because donations come and go as far as the other accounts are concerned. Fortunately, Groton is generally a very giving community. And even in tougher times, we are fortunate to get a fairly good number of donations. But this will help guarantee that we have the funds when we need them.
And you have listed on here donations, two thousand dollars. Is that, I mean, I've seen the donations come through in our packets. It seems like they're much larger than two thousand that you should be expecting.
That particular donation is from Sussman Shapiro.
Correct.
That's, this was an, they, they have been giving us an annual donation that prior to this, we'd put in Spicer or Perkins Fund to kind of bolster that. But now it's been determined that it should be part of this particular fund.
Okay. So about how much do you receive in donations as well per year?
I don't have that figure on the top of my head. But what we have in our donation trust fund now, I think we have around eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars. And that's all donations. That's not to say that they all came in this year. But it is probably at the highest level it's been for some time, actually. But it can go quickly. We've been fortunate. I think part of the reason that that balances what it is at this point is because of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we were able to use. And some of those, well, those funds were used for people that we might have helped, not to the extent we did with the ARPA monies, because we wouldn't be able to assist to the level that we did with the ARPA monies. But nevertheless, we used the ARPA monies instead of using the donation trust fund in instances where people met that, that COVID criteria to be assisted with the ARPA monies.
Okay. And then also, when it comes to the food pantry, are you purchasing the food? Or do you get the food from like wholesalers? And are you getting other donations? How is that working?
It's a combination. We are, we benefit from the Gemma Moran Food Center in New London. And we also are members of the Connecticut Food Share. And also, we do have funds in our food locker account to purchase food as we need to because it's not always guaranteed that we will get what we need from either United Way or Food Share or through donations. Although people, I must say, we post on Facebook and on our website what we need as far as food. And people are very good about bringing what we've asked for, donating what we've asked for. It may not be in the quantity that we received, say, in years past. Our donations overall are somewhat lower. But nevertheless, people do follow our postings and bring us what, what we are most in need of. But we do get to that point where we're out of soup or we're out of pasta or we're out of tomato sauce or pasta sauce or some other staple that's in our food locker. And we need to stock up on that. And then we will order in bulk from one of the local stores.
So you go to the local stores and not, like, you don't contact like Gemma Moran or a wholesaler?
Well, if we can, if we can get items from Gemma or from Connecticut Food Share, we do. But there are certain instances where they just don't happen to have, because, I mean, everybody is utilizing, every food bank and pantry in the area is utilizing the same general central sources. So if we cannot get the quantity of whatever item that we need from those sources, then we will purchase it.
Right. I understand. I would just, I would just hope that we could get it maybe through wholesale and not so much through retail.
Not, not.
Like a food service industry?
No.
Mr. Burt, if this stayed at thirty, as the number that was presented originally, we've had these discussions before, if there was a need from funding, because as she said, there's like eighty-five to ninety thousand in donations, plus this thirty will shore up an account as well. If there is a need for further money throughout the year, if she, if the account runs low, we can take from contingency or possibly even fund balance if necessary. Is that correct?
Certainly.
Right, so, because if we up this, this is putting it onto the taxpayers this year. And I would feel more comfortable being able to take from contingency or fund balance if necessary throughout the year, if, if needed. So I'm going to stick, I'm going to stay with the main motion, so thank you. Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you have a sense of how much money you actually use each year? We just talked about money coming in, but how much actually goes out?
That's interesting you ask, because my financial person is just in the, my financial assistant is just in the process of compiling that information because the town manager had a similar question today. I, I, oh, I don't even want to, I don't want to throw out a number, but I can get you that information. It's, we can spend, I'm trying to think back now, some of the purchases we've made in bulk from Stop &amp; Shop, which, and I, and I mentioned that particular store just because that's the place that we have found is most able to give us what we need when we need it. I, we've spent twelve thousand in one fell swoop stocking up. I'm, when we do the holiday distributions, that's a good example, too, of having to purchase a quantity of food. But we don't order unless we really need a quantity of food to, as I said, replenish, replenish a certain part of our food locker.
So does this, does this money go primarily just for food? Is that where this money goes?
The, the food locker money?
This, this seven, seventy-three-sixty, is that what we're talking about? This thirty thousand, is that primarily for food?
Well, it's, it's split between the general assistance and the food locker. And the general assistance monies would go more towards the rents, the fuel assistance, the utilities, that type of need. As it, as it stands, and this is a new account, so we haven't, we haven't gotten into it yet. But what we've done in the past between donation trust fund and the food locker fund is, is if our food locker fund was getting low and we still needed to get food, then we would take it out of donation trust. And we probably would still sort of play those, those different accounts, utilizing them separately or together as we need to. But, so, but it's expensive. It's expensive buying food. And, and we do, we get a fairly good quantity from Gemma Moran and from Connecticut Food Share. But as I say, there are those situations where we just, we just have to restock because we're not getting everything we need. And we need to make sure that we're giving individuals and families what we think we should be giving them.
I think, I too, will also stay with the number, the original number's on the floor, primarily because we are getting money from donations. And this is the new account, so we don't really know yet. The council has been generous and if something needs to happen, we can certainly do that. And I agree with not putting this on the taxpayers at the moment. We can, we have plenty of money to access when we need it. And that way, we'll have a year track record and we can kind of see where we're going. And then we can kind of balance it from that point. But you have continued, I know, I see the donation sheets come in. You have, Groton is extremely generous in giving money. So it's not like you're, you're running on the bottom. You have, you have money to work with.
Yeah.
And we just see where this kind of goes. And we can always relook at it anytime that we need to. So I'll stay with the, with the number on the floor, too. Thank you.
All right, we will take a vote.
I had my hand.
You've already spoken.
That was on the amended, that was on my motion. I haven't spoken.
You spoke on the amended motion. You amended it and then you spoke on it.
I have a question for the town manager.
Your question?
Is if this money was not allocated from here, where could you move monies to put into this count that wouldn't affect the taxpayer?
Well, as the mayor said, you know, we could do a contingency fund transfer or a fund balance transfer, so.
And Gieske's hand's up.
Councilor Gieske, is your hand just up?
Yes, my hand was just up. I never looked at it. My apologies.
Okay. Okay, so on account number seven-three-six-zero, in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. Councilor Bordelain.
Aye.
Councilor Pacina.
No.
Councilor Rusk recused. Councilor Jones.
No.
Councilor Gieske.
Aye.
Councilor Parker.
No.
I am also a no.
I'd like to amend the motion on the floor.
That has two, I, can?
Sure.
Just a moment.
Yep.
I have two yesses, four opposed, zero and a recusal. So that fails two to four to zero.
I'd like to put on the floor sixty thousand.
I have a motion for sixty thousand. I do not, do I hear a second? I don't hear a second. So we will go back to the main motion on seven-three-six-zero for the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Councilor Bordelain.
Aye.
Councilor Pacina.
Aye.
Councilor Rusk recused. Councilor Jones.
Aye.
Councilor Gieske.
Aye.
Councilor Parker.
Aye.
All right, one, two, six to zero, to zero, that passes.
I'm going to ask Ms. Von Dullis, can you give us a month, give me a month of report on where we're at in these two cost centers for balance, how much used, as well as your main donation account? And I'll share information with the council as we move along, keep you updated.
Absolutely.
And a point of information as well?
Is your question?
To the town manager, it's been stated that sometimes there's a limit on the request someone can do within a year for help. It's hard, I guess I'm trying to use this question. So that's yes?
Yes, so that we don't run out on one thing.
So then my other question is, how do we balance what she's asking if we're limiting folks? So we don't, are we getting the real picture, right? Because there could be a person who has an extended need.
That, just, that sounds like a referral that we might be able to discuss at the council meeting.
I have asked before. Sorry, I didn't read it, but, so that's my question.
You can submit a referral and we can have a discussion as a council of maybe how we can change some limitations.
Sure, I'll send, I'll send a referral. We'll see if it gets to votes.
Thank you. We are now on to Parks and Recreation account number one, zero, six, four. That is on page one fifty-four. Thank you. Is that your bag? Is that your bag?
Yes.
I don't want you to walk away without it. All right, so Parks and Rec, on page one-fifty-four. Counselor Rusk, would you like to?
It may happen to you.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's Counselor Pacino I'm up to now, I'm so sorry, you moved one already, correct?
I did.
Okay, Counselor Pacino.
I, thank you, Madam Mayor, I would like to move for function ten-sixty-four, the amount of two million, four hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and nine.
Second, Parker.
Got it the first time.
Counselor Pacino moved, I have Counselor Rusk with a second. Good evening, would you like to introduce yourself and give us a synopsis on your budget?
Good evening, good evening, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation, and to my left is Tabitha Wilson, who is the new manager of Parks and Open Space. The one-zero-six-four budget reflects recommendations from the Recreation Master Plan, which was based on the needs assessment, it is, also reflects the department's commitment to the community on the four pillars of service, changes to the part-time and seasonal pay plan, the, and the collective bargaining agreement. Specific proposals include replacing, filling a parks lead position with a groundskeeper, to allow us to continue to move to the appropriate staff levels, and it also includes a part-time office clerk. Operating expenses, we, in the past, the council has supported a contribution from one-zero-six-four to three-two-four-oh, which is a fund that we'll discuss shortly, has contributed twenty thousand dollars towards scholarships. This year, we're asking for an additional ten thousand dollars. We're also asking for additional money for translation services. One of the things that we're trying to do is make our department move closer towards equity in providing translation services and putting out material in more than one language. There's also a proposed increase in professional development and training, we have a number of new staff, an increase in materials and supplies, repairs and maintenance lot, repairs and maintenance supplies for aging park equipment, and also an increase in vehicle operations and maintenance just due to aging equipment. So the total increase is six point one percent over FYE twenty-four.
Point of information?
Your question?
To the town manager, if I heard correct, the vehicle stuff, is, is there any money in that other account, or any accounts that we don't know about before we discuss it that could help be moved to fund the vehicle side?
So what are you doing with vehicles, is that just maintenance?
Yeah, that's just.
Yeah, that's not purchase, that's just maintenance.
No, no, we're not purchasing, I'm sorry, we're not purchasing vehicles, this is just the maintenance of existing vehicles.
Got it, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, any questions? Counselor Bordalyn.
So, you know, to me, you know, certain sections of this are, I think, vital. Having folks who can afford summer programs is critical in areas where families cannot afford. I was in contact with the town manager, and, you know, folks were looking for accessibility to the Button, I think it's called Button Camp.
Camp Button, yes.
Which services folks, children who are identified having a form of intellectual or disability, and the mother was having trouble even after the fifty percent discount based on income, she still could not come up with the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The family was referred by the school because it would be a great program for enhancement and enrichment for her daughter, as well as, she's a single mom and needs to work, and it's hard to find someone who's safe and could handle a child that may not have the experience with special needs. So that ten thousand you're requesting, what will that do to help folks like that?
That ten thousand would be directed towards the scholarships. The scholarships, we will discount programs up to fifty percent. This is, just for example, last year, forty, more than forty percent of those kids that went to camp were on scholarships. We used, generally, we, the department uses about forty thousand dollars in scholarships for summer camps and other, other programs. So it's, it's a considerable amount of money. Prior to the last couple of years, all of that money came out of the three-two-four-oh count, which is a special revenue account. That just, that puts a greater burden on those folks that are paying for programs, so we came to the council and said, look, we think it, we think it's important that the town as a whole commit themselves towards making these programs available, and the previous council in the, in the past has supported that, and this year we're asking for a little bit more.
Yeah. I a hundred percent support that, I, I'm a firm believer, I worked in the camps for many years as an adolescent, and folks are in need, like, and the concern, though, that I have is fifty percent sometimes is still, if fifty percent is the lowest, the largest that you can cover on the lowest-income person, and the only, the person that's making the highest income, that doesn't qualify, is only paying fifty percent more, it's, for some, not much of a savings, as much as it is nice to have, and so my question is, have we looked at the pay structure to see if there's, like, some outliers, where I saw other towns, the person can apply for the fifty percent or whatever the income threshold is, but then they can write a statement, you know, a paragraph under an extra request form, where they can say, huh, I'm a single mom, you know, this one, one reached out to me, lives in Branford Manor, single mom with a kid with special needs. Is there a way to access more where they could say, you know what, we'll make it a hundred dollars for you? I believe the total program is five hundred, and so it went to two-fifty, but she was still struggling, she contacted Human Services, and then, you know, so, even at fifty percent, as much as we're happy, but if forty percent of our population are accessing that, that tells me that they might be still having trouble affording it, even at the fifty percent. So, and that income threshold could be from the lowest income to the borderline middle income. So that's my question.
So we do have in place a, a grant program where it's available to those families that even at fifty percent can't afford programs, and so they will submit an application to us. That money generally comes from donations, when, sometimes people will, you know, round up when they're writing a check, and will use that extra money towards that grant. If you're gonna ask me how much money we have in that fund right now, I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah, that's important to know for me, because my question is looking at the structure and seeing if there's a way where this, this money, if we allocated more, could also help fund that, you know what I mean, if there's not a lot in there. How many folks are applying for that extra grant?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
So I'll just say from my quick search, I saw some of it kind of mentioned in areas, but not in others, and so my request, and it costs nothing to do, is to do maybe a little bit more advertising that that grant's available, because some people may not realize that that is available. But I also would like to make a request to have you guys also come back and maybe figure out a way that some of these monies that are allocated can be moved into there if it got really low, to make sure that we're getting, capturing all of our residences, but I'm in full support of the raise to have the ten thousand in there, thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question, is it on page forty-nine that has, like, a fund balance? It says recs and senior activities? Is that the right account?
This is for what you will get to, two accounts is where the, has that fund balance.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands, but I do have a quick question, just for, to pick your brain while we're here on the budget. I was wondering if in the future, do you see a possibility of us separating in the budget, potentially doing the parks and doing the recs separately, and separating those two? Is that possible?
Sure.
Do you think that would, might be a good idea to try and keep, and so we can, might be able to see it in a better light of really what's happening, because when they're both combined, it's much, it's much more difficult, I think.
Okay.
But I'm just wondering where you, where you were on that.
There's four divisions under Parks and Recreation, so, but you're asking just to separate out parks from recreation?
Well, this is part.
Because recreation includes Thrive also, or you, would you like to see it separated out into four different budgets?
Let me ponder it, and maybe as a council we could have a discussion, or maybe I'll make a referral, but I was just wondering where you were on this, and if, just to give us a better, clearer sense of seeing the picture would be helpful.
Generally, the questions that come up are one-zero-six-four and three-two-four-oh. Generally, there isn't questions about what's in the parks division and what's in, you know, the recreation division, because there are five different cost centers that are broken out, and one of those is, alongside this, more than five, you know, one of those is parks maintenance, all of that information's on page one-fifty-six.
Okay. I just, I don't know, just seems like it's starting to get really large, and just to be able to see it separately and fit some of the needs, I don't know. We'll have a future discussion, but thank you for your two cents, I appreciate that. Counselor Parker.
Just to be clear, our finance director, I'm drawing a blank on your last name, I'm so sorry, how would that work out if that separated out? Does that work with the computerized system, or can it be done?
If it were to maintain them separately?
Yeah.
If they're with the different cost centers, that could be maintained separately.
Okay.
Are we talking about breaking them out into separate funds, or to be breaking them out, so that when we're having these discussions, they're, it's by section?
I guess, I was just trying to get clarification, actually, from the mayor, to see which way we were doing that, to think about.
I think it's a future discussion that, I, that's why I just wanted to tip on it right here real quick and see if there was a possibility, and where Mr. Berry was on his thoughts, and that maybe I could do a referral, and we'd maybe have a future discussion on it.
Well, I figured since the finance director's here, she would be better person to see if that can be worked out in the system while we're thinking of it, it's just a further question.
I don't have it all worked out in my mind yet, so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands. We will vote on count number one-zero-six-four in the amount of two million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. Counselor Bordalyn.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Gajewski.
Aye.
And Counselor Parker.
Aye.
All right, that passes, six to zero to zero. I'm sorry, seven to zero to zero. Seven, all right, up next is Shanah Kossick Golf Course, account number two-zero-one-zero on page one-fifty-nine.
Yep.
Thank you. And Counselor Parker, would you like to take that one?
Make a motion for count number two-zero-one-zero in the amount of one million, six hundred and twenty thousand, six oh one.
Second, Bordalyn. Can you repeat the number?
One million, six hundred and twenty thousand, six oh one.
Thank you. All right, moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalyn.
Just a reminder, this comes out of property taxes, this is self-funded.
Self-funded, thank you. Want to give us a synopsis on your budget?
Yes, good evening, Mark Berry, still Director of Parks and Recreation, to my right is Eric Morrison, who's the golf course superintendent. The, the proposed budget reflects a four point three percent increase over last year, personnel expenses increased by nine point nine percent due to collective bargaining agreement, overtime increases in retirement, health insurance increases to seasonal salaries due to, well, the part-time pay plan, and also a transfer of twenty-five percent of the golf course superintendent's salary, used to be paid out of parks, because Eric was overseeing parks about twenty-five percent of his time, since we now have a full-time manager of Parks and Open Space, Eric's salary is now completely paid out of the golf course. Personnel, I'm sorry, operating expenses, increases in professional technical services, equipment, machinery, materials and supplies, vehicle maintenance, and an operational analysis study. And as the town manager said, all personnel, all operating expenses are paid for through golf course fees and season pass holders.
Thank you, obviously, it's a pretty no-brainer budget if it's paid out of the way it's funded. Is there anything in here that's new that we should be kind of focused on, any enhancements that have been made that, you know, maybe to highlight this budget a little bit more for the public?
Highlights for this budget coming up?
This budget, yeah.
Okay.
Like any changes or enhancements at the communities, you know, that's kind of what the taxpayers always ask me, is like, you know, what, you go down a number, even though it is coming self-funded through, but like, you know, what did we gain this year? Anything new that's in here that maybe we should identify?
Sure, so, we have continued to make improvements to the golf course, focusing primarily on bunkers, which historically bunkers are, get the lowest rating in our golf satisfaction survey, so that has been our primary focus. We are also working on greens, when, a lot of these greens were originally built, they were designed for ten to fifteen thousand players coming through annually, we're now seeing between thirty and thirty-five thousand rounds annually, so we, we need to make improvements to the, to the tees in order to, you know, sustain the, the additional play. We have, those changes are, as you know, we went through the CIP, we proposed an additional two hundred thousand dollars to come out of fund balance for next fiscal year, and so that will continue. As I mentioned, this budget doesn't, does include an operational analysis, we did one last time, we did one, I think it was two thousand and four, is that right, Eric? Two thousand and four. Two thousand and four, so, moving forward, we're gonna be looking at that, looking for opportunities to continue to make not only fiscal improvements to the golf course, but operational improvements.
Thank you. And, you know, the accessibility, is there any, I know we spoke at, before when we came, at the rate changes, and one of the things I was hoping for is, is like, looking at ways we do it with the youth, but also maybe beginner people who wanna just start taking up golf, you know, I know Counselor Franco said something about travelers, if I remember correctly, about having golf clubs supplied, because some people don't wanna travel with them, is, you know, is that something you guys are gonna be able to do within this budget this year, as well as opening up some free classes that are advertised in our rec brochure for people, I don't know, if I wanna go try out golf for an hour, you know, have an accessibility to go see what I'm getting involved with before committing?
We do have clubs available, and have in the past, we have not talked about free We have not talked about free golf lessons, you know, that, we do have a golf pro, but that's something certainly that we could talk about. We do offer golf lessons, but generally not for free.
Yeah.
We do for youth. We have discounted programs where the golf pros waive their fees for the youth programs.
One of the things that I was looking at was adult accessibility, and since it is paid on our property, you know, tax, like our property money, and making it more accessible, one of the things is, you know, being equitable and inclusion, you know, you got the, you know, you have the, you know, the golf cart, which is great for folks that have disability. But a lot of folks may have found golfing to be financially unattainable, and so other areas are making it where they have the golf clubs available for travelers, but they might open up a like, hey, come down and let's show you a few things for an hour, and maybe it will spark the interest of wanting to join a club or start golfing. Like an open house, or, you know, come, see if you, you know, have what it takes, just, you know, learn the basics for an hour, as an amendment to our community, and then it would entice people to maybe want to buy a membership. Kind of like you do with the youth, maybe if you don't want to do it for free, do it for discounted, and that will open those barriers of accessibility to folks who may not be able to afford. The other concern I have is, you know, looking, we spoke about human services, we spoke about parks and rec accessibility and fees for folks for rec. What do we do for a lower moderate income family who wants to golf? Do we have in this anywhere where they can get a discounted rate, accessibility if they're not a senior? But they are a taxpayer to the town of Groton, and they fall below that medium, like we stated before, where they might be granted, if their child went to a rec program, 50%. How, if it was me, I want to go golf, I fall below that medium, how do I get that discount to make it achievable and affordable to me, like everybody else?
Right. That is not something that we have in place. We do have a golf advisory board, that we could certainly bring that up and discuss, yeah, right?
Perfect.
That we could discuss that. I think our next meeting, well, our next meeting's in June, but we could certainly, Eric and I could certainly have a discussion with the golf pro to see what we might be able to pull together.
I look forward to those discussions, and I just want to make sure as we're funding this, and I'm all for it, I think it's a great amenity to our town, but I do think like there are people that are struggling that might want to golf that can't afford it, and if they can prove that they, the family is below an income medium, why not make the golf inaccessible to them like we do parks and rec?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and I look forward to talking about it.
Councilor Jones?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. I just wanted you to take a look at line item 5220, the utilities fuel and mileage line. I'm looking on page 161.
151?
61.
Okay.
161. You went down $17,000. I'm just wondering what you did to have something go down?
I think that had to do with what the town negotiated for fuel costs. Is that, yeah, for fuel costs. So is it every one year we negotiate that? Okay. So every year, the purchasing agent will negotiate fuel costs, and at the time, you know, a year ago, fuel costs were higher. When we negotiated this year's, well, I guess it would be next year's, next fiscal year's rate, the cost of fuel was lower, so that's what's reflected in this decrease.
And we're actually part of consortium that work together to get those good rates?
Oh, good. Okay. All right. No, just congratulations. That's nice to see something that's normally quite expensive to come in with a nice, with a lower figure, so.
We can't really take credit for it. It's purchasing. But if you're throwing out, congratulations, we'll take it.
It's a team approach. Everybody's working together, so that's what we want. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands, so we will vote on account number 2010 for Councilor Bordalyn?
Aye.
Councilor Pacino?
Aye.
Councilor Rusk?
Aye.
Councilor Jones?
Aye.
Councilor Gajasky?
Aye.
And Councilor Parker?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you. Up next. Thank you very much. It's recreation and senior activities, account number 3240 on page 164. Councilor Gajasky, would you like to move that number?
Yes, I move the number of $1,343,185 for rec and senior, for function rec and senior activities, object code 324001.
Second, Bordalyn?
Move by Gajasky, seconded by Bordalyn. Good evening, Mr. Berry. Would you like to give us a synopsis?
Sure. So just as a reminder, for some of the new councilors, this 3240 is a special revenue, so this has no impact on the taxpayers. This is, this fund is funded through program fees that we charge for the various programs that we, that we offer. And it covers expenses such as instructor fees, materials and supplies for programs, the printing of Discover brochure, so expenses that are related to providing programs and services that we do. So the increase in operating expenses is based on a number of different things, where pool rental fees went up. We pay a pool rental fee to run swim lessons at Avery Point. Their fees went up. I think we're now paying $38,000 a year to have limited access on Saturdays, and I think a portion of Sundays to provide swim lessons. Excuse me. It also includes an increase in food costs over Thrive. As everybody knows, food is going up. We cut coupons and do everything we can. We go to Costco, we look for specials, so we're, we try to keep, and the reason we're doing that is to try to keep the meals affordable to seniors. What else is included? Library, so if I say library floor, everyone's going, what? The multimedia room that is in the community center used to be, we're looking to resurface that floor, and it was at one time a hardwood floor, it's now covered with foam pads, and we would like to strip that floor, resurface it, to provide, to allow us more space to offer programs, with more space, just to be able to increase the size of some of the programs that we run, because right now, the only other room in that building with hardwood floor is the gym. And so we're looking to just increase space that we can offer different classes. I'm sorry, the dance floors, the dance room, which is rather small, it also has hardwood We are looking to add a, a social worker over Thrive. The reason being is we get a lot, and this is just a part-time, like four hours a week We get a lot of seniors that come in that are either struggling or headed towards struggling for different reasons. We do provide a number of services. Mary Jo, who is the Thrive supervisor, she could not be here this evening, has asked that we have a part-time social worker there, just so that we can kind of have all of our services in one place. There's a, there's a comfort level with seniors working with the staff and with this, you know, with this particular person in this position. We are looking to write a grant to get this paid for, but if we're not able to, we wanted to put the money in just so that we could provide this service. We also put money in for new special events. One of the things that came out of the needs assessment was people wanted more community programs, and we are, have put money in this account to cover some of those costs associated with that. We also need to buy a new risograph machine over Thrive. A risograph machine is kind of like a high-speed printer. The Thrive distributes a number of brochures and, you know, like the, excuse me, the, the calendar of events, we need to run that off, and that gets inserted as an insert into, into the brochures that get distributed every two months. So the risograph, the machine that we have now is old, we can't get replacement parts for it. We're using a printer, but the printer wasn't really set up to be using high volume, and it's, you know, we have a lease agreement, we use a certain amount of pages, and if we're running these pages through the printer versus a risograph, we end up paying more money. So we're looking to, this is a lease, it'll be a multi-year lease for a risograph machine.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. I just wanted to, I support this budget completely, I just wanted to give a compliment to somebody who actually I use Thrive 55 on a, several times a week, and I think you guys do an amazing job, incredible support for the community. I think we're also, is one of the top five in the country, but I think that's reflected by all the different programs that you have there. The food lunch program, you can't beat a $6 lunch, so it's pretty good. But I just want to say, I think the dedication that the staff does and the programs that you offer, and what you've given to the community is just tremendous. So it's just a, I don't have any real questions, it's just a compliment on just how you run your operation.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I'd like to take credit, but, you know, you surround yourself with great people, and, and that's what we have at the, at Thrive 55.
Yeah.
Yeah, the staff is wonderful, and Groton is really fortunate to have that building and, and the staff that they do.
So keep it up, and I think this has been fantastic, so.
Councilor Bordalyn?
Uh, thank you. I do think that the Thrive, for me, it's still a Groton senior center, I apologize, it's just-
It's okay. I struggle with the two.
Yeah. But a great asset, and, you know, one of those things that, you know, it's so important to have in your community, so thank you for all that. When you talked about the printer machine, were we currently leasing the one we have or no?
No, we have owned, well, I, we have owned the one that we have for a number of years, and I think we were paying an annual maintenance fee, but like I said, the machine is so old that we can't even get parts for it anymore, so we haven't used it in a while.
I was just going to ask, I was making, because I was going to say, I was going to recommend leasing, and I didn't know if the town has other leased machines, because sometimes if you pool them all in there, sometimes it's a cost savings. So I just, I think the leasing's the way to go, because they come right out, they fix it, they order the part, so I can support that. As far as the social worker, I'm also in support of that, I think it's also vitally important, there's a lot of senior needs that folks have that they're experiencing. But I was wondering if as a way to pool our services, we have a social worker, they're, you know, working at the police department, and we also have, you know, our human service office, you know, we didn't want to fund it over there, and it's kind of once you wonder like, maybe if we had, that person could have been split. I've seen other towns, you know, utilize that split, so I just didn't know to the town manager, is there any way from human services, now that we're not doing the counseling and the therapy? I mean, four hours is not a ton, is there, is there any room within some of our programs at all to help fund that?
Well, I mean, outside general fund, this is the way to do it, this is not a fee, so it's not a cost of the general fund.
And just, you brought up a great point. We do utilize the services of the police department and their outreach, visiting nurses, it's a collective approach to, to try and address the needs of some of the seniors that are coming to us, and so, yeah, we're not doing this kind of isolated. We, we are currently engaged with a number of different groups and want to kind of build on that, and that's why we've asked for this, this social worker.
Because it would be helpful, like, you know, you could have social services come down and have a half an hour at the senior center. I'm not saying don't fund the position, I'm for it, but I'm just saying, like, bringing them in one day a week to talk to the residents if needed, from our own human service office, they could be down there for an hour on Fridays, let's just say. So I didn't know if there was any outreach on top of this part-time position by saying, hey, could you send some staff to talk about this?
Those discussions have taken place with limited success in getting a crossover.
Well, because I do think, like, if there's a need of a resident that comes in and they are a Groton resident, and our human services is like less than a quarter mile down the road, that, you know, and you're seeing a need, you know, you could say, hey, we have some food insecurity and how to apply for this stuff, and, you know, she, she mentioned tonight that there's heat assistance for seniors, you know, bringing them, the resource to the building of those seniors that may not have transportation would be vital. So maybe there's a way, to the town manager, is there any way to look at coordinating any of that, and on top of what we already have?
Well, certainly. I think part of what, the point of this is, it'll be a known person I have comfort with, and they'll help them be the go-between to obtain the services.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just definitely important, you know, when you look at ways that we can utilize, you know, a lot of towns pool within, and they, it's good for them to be comfortable with our human services as well. So I think this is great, I can support the four-hour position of that, I think that's definitely needed, and, uh, thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
Okay, I don't see any other hands. So I'm going to call for a vote on account number 3240, in the amount of $1,343,185. Councilor Bordalyn?
Aye.
Councilor Pacino?
Aye.
Councilor Rusk?
Aye.
Councilor Jones?
Aye.
Councilor Gajasky?
Aye.
And Councilor Parker?
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero to zero.
Motion to recess till-
Thank you very much, Mr. Berry, and I think we're all set for this evening.
Motion to recess till tomorrow, April 16th, Tuesday at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, we are recessed until 6:00 p.m. April 16th. It is now 7:23. Thank you.
Added more tonight.
Recording stopped.